...oh four, we will call this meeting to order. The only item of business tonight is the continued public hearing that started yesterday. So we'll start tonight with another brief presentation from our city staff on this particular project. So I invite Lori and/or Debbie to come in, share their information.
If there's someone who wants an interpretation, please raise your hand so we know and we can do that for you. So tonight is the continuation of the public hearing. Again, it started last evening. And what we'll do is call folks up in order that you have signed up on the sign-in sheet, which is over there. If you've previously spoken, we ask that you not speak until everyone else has had a chance to speak. So if you've signed up and you spoke last evening, if you could just acknowledge that and then we'll hold your comments until those who have not spoken have a chance to make their remarks. So when you come to the podium, we ask that you give your name and the city that you live in, and if relevant, the mobile home park that you're speaking about. You'll have three minutes. Those who come in who may need interpretation services will have six minutes so that Eliana can work her magic and translate the remarks for the commissioners. We will not have the remarks translated for everyone because the audience really here for the public hearing is the planning commissioners. So the planning commission and the city, in fact, are recognizing that the existing mobile home parks are a significant source of affordable homeownership. And that's why the city council assigned this project to the planning commission. It was a result of a housing strategy plan that they developed last year, and this was a top priority to look at this issue. The city does not own the mobile home park properties, and so there is nothing at this point that would impact how a park might be redeveloped by the property owner if that person chose to do that. So the idea here is that the city is trying to determine whether there are ways that could prevent closure, limit closure, or if there were to be a closure, to mitigate the impacts of that, reduce the impacts. Again, every property owner is making these decisions for their own property at this point. During the time that the planning commission is having these discussions, they've put a moratorium on redevelopment of the mobile home parks. And that's a temporary hold on a property owner's ability to file for a redevelopment proposal. We are not aware of an immediate redevelopment proposal, just to reassure you at this point. So as the planning commission has been discussing this, hearing from all of the residents and the property owners over the last seven months, they've come across a couple of competing issues, and this has been a difficult discussion. They're concerned about having an adequate housing supply, which leads to more stable rents. And they're also balancing the interests of the mobile home park residents and others who are facing financial hardships. So in making their recommendations, the planning commission set out a list of criteria. And those criteria are included on the sheets over here on the table. If you didn't pick one up, please do so. And the criteria looked at certain elements of all of the mobile home parks and then used that, they used that to make their recommendations. So the recommendations for two of the parks, Lakewood Villa and Inglewood East, the commission is recommending a variety of methods to ensure long-term preservation. And that includes zoning regulations, potential purchase, and incentives to the property owner. For three of the parks, those Kenmore Village and the two smaller parks on Northeast 181st Street, the commission is at the recommendation is that the owner continue to be allowed to redevelop the property, but only if new affordable housing units were included in the development. And that recommendation includes a requirement for a relocation plan and potential relocation assistance. For the remaining park, which is Lakewood on Northeast 182nd Street, again, the planning commission is recommending that the property owner be allowed to continue to redevelopment, redevelop that park if he so chose, but that new redevelopment would have to include affordable units. And also for that park, the recommendation is that the city consider offering incentives to the property owner to continue the mobile home park use. So at their meeting in June, June 5th, the planning commission will be making their final recommendations to the city council. And then those recommendations go to the city council, and that body makes the final decision, and we expect that to happen this summer. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Commission Chair Mark Orenshaw.
Thank you, Lori. So yeah, just I'll go over the ground rules real quickly again for the speaker. So each speaker will have three minutes. For anyone who's speaking in Spanish, you'll still have three minutes, but we'll make sure your time is extended to allow for any translation. And finally, as Lori alluded to, this is a challenging topic, and we definitely want to hear everyone's comments on it and show civility and respect. So we're asking everyone not to cheer or boo or otherwise speak out from the audience so we can support the right of everyone to be...
Mark, one second so I can...
Okay.
We have one member in the audience.
Sure.
Planificador principal dio su presentación de apertura, acababa de terminar cuando usted llegó, está diciendo el planificador, Mark. Es que cada persona va a tener tres minutos, cuando haya intérprete tienen seis minutos y que por favor es muy importante mantener el respeto en este tipo... Dan y haga comentarios cuando alguien más esté hablando para respetar las opiniones de todos.
Thank you. So with that, we will start with the list here. Our first speaker is Robert Spurlock.
... empezando con la lista de las personas que se inscribieron para hablar.
Good evening, planning commission members. My name is Ross Spurlock, and I live at 7021 Northeast 181st Street. And one of the parks that has no name is on the same side as the street as Safeway. Last month, we have lived there for 31 years, you know, in the old home. And we've seen, 31 years ago, this was quite a different area than it is today. Since within there, since Kenmore became the city, we've seen a lot of, I think, really positive changes take place in our area. And what the commission's endeavored to make sure everybody's treated fairly in this process of building identity housing and treating the numbers who are being displaced, I hate to say displaced, but to remember them to, so that they could find affordable housing, particularly in the Kenmore area. I've become quite accustomed to the Kenmore area. I've been here 31 years along with my wife, and we like it very well in this area. We think there's good people here and a good place to stay. And so I'm, anyone who is ultimately displaced, I would surely like to see something put in place to help those people out who either will have to move their old home or abandon their home because some of the homes are too old to move. And so basically, what the old homeowners are faced with, and quite possibly it would be me possibly, would be abandoning our home and us losing our investment in the old home that we bought and financed and paid for while living in this area. So I appreciate all the work the planning commission has been doing on this project, and I'm sure they're going to come out with a very positive decision that they could take to the city council that will surely benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Our next speaker is Walt Olson.
My name is Walt Olson, and I'm an attorney for Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park in Kenmore. And Lakewood Villa appreciates the competing issues that you've now faced and struggled with. It's a difficult challenge that both Kenmore and other cities have faced as it relates to mobile home parks, specifically how to provide both a new housing supply, which could offer as much, if not more, affordable housing than the existing housing supply or the existing mobile home parks, while at the same time preserving the existing mobile home parks and determining who should bear the burden of this public good of affordable housing. And that's where I think the struggle exists and where more consideration could occur by both the planning commission and the city council. Because I think it's important for all of us to recognize, and perhaps we can all even agree, that affordable housing is something that we're all collectively responsible for. And no one of us are or should be individually responsible for. It's that kind of a notion that if we're to provide affordable housing, everyone should chip in, that I think should be the guiding light of the city's consideration. And in fact, there is a constitutional provision that provides that roadmap. It's Article One, Section Three of our state constitution, provides that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law. And in that regard, that includes the notion that if affordable housing is a public good, then it should be a public burden as well, one that we all share with and chip in. And so I would ask, on behalf of Lakewood Villa, that the city carefully consider that notion when considering any form of mandatory requirement as it relates to mobile home parks. To the extent that the recommendations are voluntary or are intended to be voluntary on the behalf of the mobile home park, you'll find that mobile home parks or Lakewood Villa specifically would support that. And so I think the focus of the city's consideration could be on the incentives in Option 3A and what they should be. As Dan Stoner testified to last night in the video, anyway, the devils in the details will determine whether those incentives are successful or not. In prior testimony, I believe there's been information provided that incentives were tried in the city of Lynwood but failed. I was involved with the city of Lynwood, and I see that my time is up, but I would just briefly mention that the reason the incentives failed in the city of Lynwood is because they weren't enough to encourage mobile home park owners to shoulder the public burden of affordable housing for all of us. To the extent that the city of Kenmore comes up with incentives that do encourage mobile home park owners to sign up, then Lakewood Villa will. And so in that regard, we would ask the planning commission to spend time on determining what the devils in the details of the incentives are and how they might be used to encourage the preservation of affordable housing in a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Russ Millard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Russ Millard from Inglewood East. I'm a professional property manager. We'd like to thank you for your time and diligence in this matter. I know that you're volunteers, and this is a difficult situation to try to weigh out all the different issues for all the different stakeholders. We're in favor of incentives, of course, because it motivates us as developers as well as owners and landlords and to do more and to be proactive in that regard. We have developed thousands of manufactured housing spaces from the ground up, from design to putting in the infrastructure, to actually putting in the manufactured homes and then managing the communities. And any opportunities that you can help with, even today and in the future, providing more availability for this valuable housing alternative, would be a very proactive thing that you could do. We are constantly looking for opportunities to develop more of these housing types. We would ask that you make anything relative to existing parks, you would make that a voluntary opportunity, that we could get input and help with the details of those things so that we could work together and collaborate and make something that's good for both the existing residents as well as the landlord or those that are in ownership of the land. We know this is a difficult task that is before you, and we are available to help or to give input on suggestions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harry L., and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Is there a Harry L.?
Sorry.
That's okay. My handwriting's really bad, too, so I empathize.
My name's Harry Perfeder, and I submitted something in writing, a four-page submission plus a couple of attachments yesterday. And if anyone on the commi... and thank you for having this hearing. If anyone on the commission has any questions about what I submitted in writing, I'll be glad to entertain those. Otherwise, I'll make, I'll use the rest of my time to make a statement about why I think the commission seriously needs to consider the needs of the residents in the affected mobile home parks. I live at 7001 Northeast 181st Street, Unit 4. I've lived there for 25 years. Paid rent, done what I'm supposed to do to live life peacefully. And I am now in a situation where I'm living off of social security, so that's my sole income. And if this park gets closed, my understanding is from what I've done, a little bit of research after I saw what you folks are about and what's going on, that a minimal apartment rent is about $1,000. If that is the case, that's about 90% of my social security check. So if that is the case, where am I going to go? Older gentleman here spoke of 35 years. When you get old, you have unique problems. He and I and his wife share that. All I would ask is this commission, take those problems extremely seriously because you're dealing with human beings. This is not dollars and cents, and everyone wants to see Kenmore improve itself. Everyone wants to see a nice Kenmore. No, no, there wouldn't be a soul in this room who doesn't feel that way. And redevelopment of the parks may be right in line with that, but please consider the residents here. That's about all I got to say. Got 30 seconds left?
Thank you, and thanks to our other speakers as well. Those are all the names that are signed up here, I believe, on the public hearing sheet, or is there another one?
Parece que esas son todas las personas que firmaron, que pusieron su nombre en el registro de entrada para hablar. ¿Hay alguien más que quiere hablar?
Vivo en el parqueadero 7614 N. Barthow Way in Kenmore Village. It's Kenmore Village. We would like to ask you, please, for your support. We would like for you to listen to us. We please ask you... Don't allow anything to happen. We want to continue to live in our home. We have three children. They are aware of the situation, and they listen to everything. They know what's going on, and they know that if something happens, we're going to have to move. Perhaps they will have to go to a different school, far away. So we ask you to please... Listen to us. We don't want anything like this to happen. We want to continue living in this mobile home park. And honestly, we have invested a lot of money. And it would not be, it would not be fair to have to lose all that money that we have put into our homes. And two years, we would ask for two years without paying rent, and that's not a lot But if something is going to happen, we would like for you to let us know and give And we would like to know the value of our mobile home. We would like to know the value of our own home and that of other people. And we would like to get fair payment. Because it would be a mess for everybody. We have all struggled to have what we have, and we would be losing everything. And that wouldn't feel good. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, that's the last name on the sign-in sheet. At this time, I would welcome others who did not sign up at tonight's hearing to speak.
Good evening again, Kylan Parks, Lynwood, Washington. I will be very quick. I won't even take a minute, probably. I just wanted to mention a few things to what Walt Olson said. I understand how the owners feel, that maybe they're carrying more of the burden of affordable housing on them by these discussions. I really try to look at things with the shoe on the other foot, and I really listen to that and say, how would I feel? However, they are in a business. They own these properties to, as a business, and that was their choice, and it is a people business. And human rights and things are included in that. What I have a problem with is some of the incentives. Maybe some incentives would be okay, but they talk about the infrastructures having run their course. The infrastructures have run their course because it was a bad business decision. They could have put 5%, 10% of people's rents away for a preventative maintenance plan. So when pipes break and water spills, then they fix it and make it for a good business, and people continue to pay their land rents. They have not done that, and that's why the infrastructures are, ran their course, so to speak, because they have decided to defer the maintenance, put all of the homeowners' rents in their pocket that have, and that's business. That is part of business. I've heard all of you say, "It's business." We do understand that. And we have paid our rents and made that decision to help them make their money. So please keep these other points into effect. When people, like this lady that just spoke, said, "We will lose everything," you know, maybe it isn't as much as you all have, but it's what they have and what's near and dear to them. Don't allow them to lose everything. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name again, just for the record? I want to make sure we have that.
Kylan, K-Y-L-I-N, Parks. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't signed up on the sign-in Going once, going twice? So thank you very much. At that point, I believe that concludes our public hearing. Do we need a motion to close the hearing? No. Okay, so I will officially close the... So we will close the public hearing, and Commissioner Olson wanted the staff to, again, to reiterate the schedule for the next hearings.
Entonces una vez más vamos a ver cuál es la programación de eventos para la próxima All right, so this is the closure of the public hearing. The next steps in this process are that the planning commission will meet on June 5th, that's a Tuesday, Tuesday, June 5th, and they will be discussing what they've heard tonight and making their final recommendations. So the planning commission's role is to make recommendations to the city council, make the final decision on the proposal, and we expect that they will make their decision...
Bueno entonces, lo que va a pasar ahora es que el 5 de junio, el martes 5 de junio, la comisión de planificación se va a reunir una vez más. El trabajo de ellos es, primero prepararon las recomendaciones preliminares y ahora van a preparar las recomendaciones finales para el consejo municipal. Entonces eso va a ocurrir el 5 de junio, ellos se van a reunir para eso, y después de eso ellos le dan al consejo municipal la decisión final. No sé exactamente para cuándo van a tener eso listo, pero va a ser este verano, en algún momento, en junio o en julio, se va a llevar a cabo la determinación de la recomendación final.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just want to end by saying I want to thank everyone for coming out and for being involved in this issue. And I encourage everyone to stay involved, not only with our consideration of this, but as it goes to the city council, because as has been mentioned, they have the final say on our recommendations to them.
Pero entonces les agradezco mucho a todos por venir hoy y, por favor, continúen participando como puedan y también comunicándose con el consejo municipal porque ellos son los que tienen la palabra final en cuanto a la recomendación de lo que se va a hacer.
Go ahead, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can you come up and...
I'll speak loudly to everyone here. Will there be any opportunity to speak to the city council about this matter when the city council meets?
The city council has citizen comment every meeting, and at the time it comes to a public hearing before the city council, absolutely, there will be opportunities to speak before the city council, yes.